Walking on top.
Yes, so what we're going to do is just move an amendment. And Nancy, if you would just be able to say. I second where you're at, so I can. If you want to make.
Sure. Say that we just have Reno. Let's have Reno. Why would you go and. You must have fired them because they fought their story. You must have fired them. Or it sounds like it's in the store. Right.
So it would be. Yeah, so it would be moved to.
What we do is grant, just say we're going to move to amend it to.
Yes.
Ray, are we looking? Can you let me know when you're ready? Hang on. Okay. You all right? Good? Yeah. You good? Okay, Mary? Let's call the order, the workshop meeting for October 17, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. Clerk call the roll. Councilmember Skoljak.
Here.
Councilmember Gomato.
Here.
Councilmember Stoil.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols.
Here.
Councilmember I like to meet. Period. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, communication from the mayor. This is true, I do have some announcements for the safety of the area. I'll just wait for the formal meeting. It'll be fine. It'll be fine. Okay, let's go into discussions on communication from the public. Edwin, we've got prefiled number 58. That's correct. Resolution authorizing amendment to extend border patrol augmentation program. Any discussion, council? Here, none, 59. Resolution authorizing extension and amendments to discovery reform services agreement. Any discussion, council?
That's a year later.
Okay. Number 60. Resolution accepting trees for beautification. Any discussion, council?
On there, we have trees arriving tomorrow, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And how much, council, do we need to make sure that they're native before they die?
Ray, do you want to talk about that? You didn't quite hear that, sorry.
How much time do we have to plant, do we have planting before, I mean, we have revitalized?
There's a schedule, we go in the ground tomorrow at 8:00.
Oh, okay, great.
Thank you, Ray.
I think the trucks are there.
Yeah, they are.
I just talked with Mr. Bob Seen, and during the meeting, we're going to have to make a move to amend paragraphing that resolution.
Correct?
That we just received today.
Number 61. Resolution authorizing paper tree sales moratorium. Any discussion, council?
I'm going to have Mr. Bob Seen go into depth on that likely during the regular meeting.
Correct. Number 62. Resolution authorize establishing 2023 Halloween trick-or-treat hour. Any discussion, council?
Mayor, does that mean that we're not going to have the new Halloween like we had done last year, the big hoopla in the Sterns building?
Mayor. So on Resolution 61, question from Councilwoman.
62.
I'm sorry, 62.
Trick-or-treat. Trick-or-treat.
The question was posed, are we still going to do something in Sterns Court as we've done in the past? We are doing something in Sterns Court, and that's one of the announcements that I asked for this evening.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, 63.
Resolution providing a citywide rabies clinic.
Any discussion, council? Okay, new business, we're going to have a walk-in.
I have walk-in resolution number 64, 2023, approving settlement of Article 7, Act, Surchargeary Litigation, 30 Lake Shore Drive East, Dunkirk, New York, Act here, 2020, 2021.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, this just came out today. Mike, could you explain, does this have to do with just certain properties in the city or?
Yeah. Excuse me. Yeah, so Dunkirk Resorts LLC had actually filed for a change to their assessment just for the year, tax year 2020, 2021, and, and once they went through that process and then proceeded to court, the school district actually intervened in the proceeding and because they actually have the largest exposure in terms of any change to the assessment, any possible change to the assessment. So luckily, we were able then to piggyback on their counsel, Hodgson-Russ, and so there were what you might imagine relative to any sort of negotiation going forward with litigation, and Hodgson-Russ was successful in essentially getting us to the point where, I'm not going to say that Dunkirk Resorts withdrew, but it was settled that there would be no change to that assessment. And I would just tell you also that they'd already paid, you have to pay your taxes while you proceed with any challenge, so those monies have already been paid, and I checked on that today. So frankly, this will just allow us to conclude the litigation without any change to the assessment that they had brought as a challenge.
Okay.
And all this is in the best favor of the city, correct?
All of the taxing jurisdictions, so the city, county, and especially the school district.
And Mike, just per our conversation this afternoon, the reason for the walk-in is there's a filing date due?
Yes. October 23, there's a report to the court, and so they will need this signed right away, and if it's approved tonight, I'll actually be signing what you received, a copy of what you received, I'll be signing that and signing that right away.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other new business? Okay. Hearing none, before I ask for a motion for a adjournment, I'm going to need a motion to move, to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed sale, acquisition, or lease of real property.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion, can I have a second? I have a second. Clerk call the roll. Councilmember Skoljak.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoil.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember I like to meet. Okay, you have a motion to adjourn.
No, sir.
Motion to adjourn the workshop, seconded by Stoil. Councilmember Skoljak. Councilmember Gomato. Councilmember Stoil.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember I like to meet.
Aye.
For adjourn. Come.
As you said, you didn't resent it. We're not rescinding nothing. The White House has to do what you need to do.
Ed, anytime you're ready, sir.
Okay, okay. Let's call to order the regular meeting for October 17th, 2023 at 5:42 PM. Clerk, call the role of police.
Councilmember Skoviac?
Here.
Councilmember Bemato?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Alajdameko?
Here.
I pledge with America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Certification of the prior meeting?
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 was presented to the mayor on Friday, October 13th, 2023. Pursuant to Section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect. In witness whereof I have here to set my hand and the seal of the city of Dunkirk, New York, the 17th day of October, 2023.
I need a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented. Got a motion by Councilwoman Luskoviac, seconded by Bemato.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alajdameko?
Aye. Carrie, privilege of the floor?
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case each individual appearing shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing any group who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining these time limits, and the chair may determine his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. The first privilege of the floor is reserved for members of the public and shall be limited to subject matter relating to local laws, resolutions, ordinances, and motions appearing on the agenda. Since we're going to have a second reading, our privilege, I'm going to read that now. The second privilege of the floor is reserved for members of the public to speak on any subject pertinent to the affairs of city government. The chair shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or slanderous or non-germane. The time limit specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that the chair may allow any person to complete a statement or thought started before such time had expired, and a longer time may be allowed by the chair with the approval of the majority of the council.
Okay. Privilege of the floor is now open?
I would just mention that the second privilege of the floor is at the conclusion of the meeting after new business, but before adjournment, just to be clear.
Yep. Hello, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Steve Reese. I reside at 433 Dove Street in the city, and this evening I'm speaking on behalf of Revitalized Dunkirk regarding our current tree planting project referred to in Resolution 60-2023 that's being considered by council tonight. I hope to clear up any confusion and answer any questions you might have. I serve as chair of Revitalized Dunkirk's seven-member Point Gratchit Reforestation Committee that was appointed on 7/13/23 by the organization's Board of Directors. The charge to that committee is to organize and carry out this tree planting project based on research dating back to early January. The committee was established in response to very favorable Facebook posts regarding previous planting efforts at the point and elsewhere. A need existed due to the loss of over 250 trees to Emerald Ash borer infestation. Community members sought to donate funds for planting new trees specifically at Point Gratchit. Additionally, Revitalized Dunkirk was awarded funds via a successful North Chautauqua Community Foundation environmental grant. The Revitalized Dunkirk Board of Directors agreed to accept restricted funds for Point Gratchit trees with the understanding that no requests for a specific tree species, specific locations, or memorial markers would be considered since doing so would unduly burden our limited volunteers. In summary, after several months of planning, the planting project at Point Gratchit will begin tomorrow. Tree species were selected by reforestation committee members based on the advice of the Chautauqua County Soil and Water Conservation District employee Cassie Pengkosky, New York State DEC Urban Forester Nate Maury, and recommendations from the 2019 City of Dunkirk Tree Management Plan created by the Davy Resource Group. The planting of 30-plus trees at sites selected by committee members will be accomplished by local nursery owner Jill Jaquith of Greener Gardens with the assistance of Parks Department employees and Revitalized Dunkirk volunteers. To be clear, our project is separate from that of any plans made by Mary Louise McGraw's group, A Tree For Thee, that has different criteria. Their plans to fundraise for trees that include memorial markers is a laudable effort, and we wish them well. In addition, we wish to thank Mary Louise and her husband John Brown for their help over the past growing season to provide weekly watering services of trees previously planted at the point by Revitalized Dunkirk. In its revised form, we recommend adoption of Resolution 60.2023. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Hello, please state your name and address.
Let me get set up first there. Mary Louise McGraw, 736 Swan Street, Dunkirk, New York. But I am speaking collectively for the group or the project known as A Tree For Thee. Just want to thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'm representing a group project called A Tree For Thee. At the beginning of the project, we had a meeting where we invited Steve and Mary Reese. They gave us complete ABCs of planting trees, including information for what kind of tree to choose, for different locations and different kinds of soil. In the process of meeting with them, Revitalize clearly stated they did not want to be in the reforestation of the point. All in all, it was very cooperative, and we appreciated them taking the time to share their information with us. They realized our project was completely different than what Revitalize thought of. We modeled our plan upon that solid information to learn a few weeks later that Revitalize decided they wanted to reforce the point and acquired money to do so. Confusion was apparent at this point, so we enlisted the help of Randy Woodbury. At that point, I contacted Randy Woodbury with a suggestion to use the access road leading up to the bandstand as a dividing line so we could continue our plans, so we would have from the entrance of the point to the access road, and since they were obligated to do 30 trees, they would have from the access road to the end of the point. He thought it was a good idea. He and Jason went to a meeting, excuse me, with Revitalize, and as a result of the meeting, I received a text on August 30th that said Revitalize had agreed to the understanding, and the text went to the law department, Andy Bone, and myself. A map with a pencil right over the line where the access road was also included for visual verification. At that point, we thought everybody was on board, same page, same story. On Friday, October 6th, people in the committee had noticed there were stakes in the ground from Revitalize with 16 or so trees on the area that had been relegated to our project. When I called Randy, I said, "What happened? What changed?" I was informed that the new boundary was going to be Oak Street with no explanation as to why. Okay, we turn around and then find out about this resolution being considered. During the council meeting about accepting 30 trees from Revitalize to be planted at the point, we see two maps. One where Revitalize has 14 acres to plant 30 trees, and one that Tree For Thee has 14 acres to plant 100 trees. We requested, this did not settle very well with us. We requested several council people to table this resolution until we could meet together to figure out what happened, what changed from our original agreement from August 30th. We now know that the tree planting for Revitalize will start tomorrow. While talking with Randy and other council people, the message that we keep hearing is, "We just want trees planted at the point," and we couldn't agree more. That's exactly what Revitalize does. They plant trees. Our project is also planting trees, but the caveat is that we're making a memory. We are inviting the public to buy a tree, have a plaque, allowing this little metaphorical ownership of a little piece of Point Gratchit. These trees will be planted in memory of a loved one, a family reunion, a class reunion, the birth of a child, maybe dedicated to a marriage, and for whatever reason, they are buying these trees. Our original goal was to plant 200, and now we've been relegated to 14 acres and 100 trees. I have followed the rules that have been spelled out to me by Nancy Nichols and the DPW committee. I have attended two meetings and had a very positive response. We have done everything to make, excuse me, concessions and to cooperate with Revitalize to make it so everybody can get along, but for some reason, it doesn't seem to be enough. Since I know this resolution is going to be passed, I am requesting a meeting with the three groups to figure out why everything is such a turmoil, such a conflict, and such a waste of good energy, because our two programs are as different as night and day. I understand everyone thinks that this is just about planting trees, but it's not. Let me reiterate. Our original goal was 200 trees. I already have 47 people that call me personally and have spoken for trees.
Okay, ma'am, your time is running out. Finish your stunt.
Okay. They love our concept, and we haven't even really presented this to the public. We need the city of Dunkirk, the common council, for support. We like this to the same thing as the honor banners, that is going to be very much in demand. Thank you for letting me speak and listening, and I really need the council, the mayor, and other personnel that are employed by the city of Dunkirk to support us, to give us the space that we need. Let this truly be encompassing as a community project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the portion? Going once? Go ahead. Hello, state your name and address, please.
Arthur Page, 33 Wright Park Drive, First Ward. I believe it was at the last city council meeting, there was a talk of paper streets, having a moratorium to sell them to residents, and before that gets, I'm just seeing the agenda here now. So if that's on the agenda tonight, I don't know, but before, yes, it is. Before we get there, I just wanted to say, maybe possibly instead of having a complete moratorium, having a moratorium on property that is not adjacent to your own property. So somebody can buy the portion that's adjacent to your property, but not on the other half of the street or down the street or whatever else. Just a little clarification so that process can keep going forward for development, and people who are already typically taking care of that portion of the property as well can actually have that as part of their property. So, thank you, just to note.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mary Reese, 433 Dove Street, and speaking on behalf of Revitalized Dunkirk. Just to say that regarding the two different tree planting programs, there's clearly been a miscommunication and misunderstanding. We met with Mary Louise's group at her invitation on one time, August 8th, and had no further communication with her. At that time, we shared the information we had regarding appropriate species of trees to plant, and we at no point said that we weren't planning to plant anything there. We have always planted trees there. We were continuing to plant trees there. What we told her is that we were not going to be involved with memorializing them because that was not what we were interested in, but that we appreciate her idea and her initiative and her efforts because we know it's a very popular idea with the public, but it's one that our volunteers are not equipped to handle. But we are equipped to handle. We have been coordinating with the city parks department, the DPW, the way we always have over the past five years with the planting of the trees, and we were not aware that we were expected to coordinate with any other group other than the city of Dunkirk's park departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Would anyone else like to speak on the agenda?
Is it possible to have a second comment?
No, you've had your.
Thank you.
Okay, going once, twice, three times. Privilege of the first floor is now closed. Okay, communication from the mayor. Mayor Roses.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few announcements today. The first one is a letter I received today from the chairman of the North County Water District, and I'll just read it. It says, "Dear Mayor Rosas and city council members, the North County Water District Board members wish to express their thanks for the assistance provided to our efforts to complete our current capital project to fully implement our regional water system. We appreciate the water provided by the city in order to bore under the throughway for the new water main project. When completed, the new water main will supply water to the newly constructed water storage tank located in the town of Sheridan. We commend the efforts of city public works director Randy Woodbury for his ongoing supportive relationship with the district on behalf of the city." And this is again from Daniel Pecus, chairman of the North County Water District. "I thought it was important to publicly acknowledge the efforts that we have ongoing here behind the scenes to nurture the relationships with our partners. I would like to publicly commend our DPW director Randy Woodbury for his efforts. He attends all of the North County Water District meetings. They're usually held in the evenings, and he is the representative of the city for theings. As you know, the North County Water District is continuing to gain more customers. As they gain more customers, so does the city. So I would like to acknowledge him with yet another city
I also would like to announce today that there will be a press release coming out from our special events coordinator, Ryan Hall, regarding a Halloween event that the city of Dunkirk will be sponsoring. It'll be right here in the Sterns Courtyard on Tuesday the 31st of October from 3 PM to 5 PM. And again, there will be a press release coming out with more details. Ryan is going to be working with the school district to make sure that all the children in our community are aware of it. I also wanted to bring to the attention of the council that our county legislature will be voting on raising tipping fees once again to municipalities. This is an issue that I mentioned during my budget presentation and my budget message. It's also in there that, again, I was in communication today with the mayor of the city of Jamestown, who is very concerned and has stated to me that it is very likely that the city of Jamestown, if this increase goes through, will have to raise rates on their customers. I think that the county sometimes forgets that city residents in both the city of Jamestown and the city of Dunkirk are still county residents. I think it's unfortunate. There is a meeting coming up next Wednesday where they will be formally voting this increase. I am hoping and encouraging council members to join me in publicly voicing our opinions against this increase. As I said before, last year, they imposed an increase to us, and it caused us to have to raise rates. This year, we absorbed it, but if this continues to be an annual increase, then obviously we will have to increase rates on our ratepayers as well. This will also have a negative impact on industries and businesses in our communities. So again, I am urging council members to please voice your opinions against it along with me. Mayor Sunkish is also going to do the same thing with his council as well.
Mayor, at the same time, excuse me, at the same time, they're lowering their county tax. I don't, I...
It makes no sense. It's a shell game, but that's my opinion. I...
Yeah, I get your opinion. I agree with it. I don't know how you can lower one and raise the...
As I said, the, you know, we have a wastewater plant where we take slush into their facilities. That's going to go up a dollar a ton. That increase alone will cost us close to $70,000. And these are, again, fees that we'll then have to impose on our payers, which is our industries and businesses, along with our city residents. So again, I encourage council to join me in at least voicing our opinion to the county legislative representatives so that hopefully they will not vote for it. legislative representatives so that hopefully they will not vote for it. Finally, I would like to make an announcement. If, Mr. Chairman, you could join me and if our planning and development director Vince DeJoy could come out front here. And this announcement is a, it's an important announcement because nobody in Chautauqua County has been designated with this type of achievement and opportunity to represent our community. The Appalachian Region Commission represents 13 states and I am pleased and proud to announce that our development director Vince DeJoy is one of only 40 community leaders chosen by the Appalachian Regional Commission to participate in the 2023 and 2024 Appalachian Leadership Institute, a fully funded leadership and economic development training opportunity for individuals living in one of the 13 Appalachian states. Vince is the first and only person ever selected for Chautauqua County and the Southern Tier West area. The Appalachian Regional Commission is an economic development entity of the federal government and 13 state governments focusing on 423 counties across the Appalachian region. New York's Appalachian Regional Commission program is based within New York State's Department of State's Division of Local Government Services. It serves 1 million residents in New York's 14-county ARC region, which encompasses the southern tier of New York, from Schuahery County to Chautauqua County. Please help me to congratulate Vince for selection as a recognized regional leader for economic and community development as he participates in this prestigious fellowship. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, reports of standing committees, boards and commissions, Councilwoman Lyskowiak.
Oh, um, yes. First Ward has a couple of kind-hearted souls that clean up along the wall walkway of Lakefront Boulevard and I want to give them a big thank you. One of those kind-hearted souls is John Bulgalski. He has one of those white sweepers, thank you, John. Another older fellow who doesn't wish to give his name keeps the receivers unplugged and also picks up along the Lakefront Walkway. I'm sure many First Warders have seen these two in action. If you do, kindly roll down your window and shout a thank you, please. Randy, I have a question for you. It's regarding the plight of some of the railroad crossings that, you know, citizens have recently been proactive about. I have heard there's been communication with the Federal Railroad Commission regarding the crossings on Routes 5 and 20?
Yes, on Routes 5 and Routes 60.
60.
We had a meeting with, by Zoom, last week. We had City Attorney Bob Seen there. We had several other people from the city on that Zoom meeting. And we also were honored to have Mr. Robert Mays there, who's a citizen who collected 629 signatures that really got their attention. And we put him front and center, right in front of the Federal Railroad Commission and, and we, and he's been a very good friend of the City of Dunkirk with helping with the Quiet Zone renewal, Mr. Lou Frangella. And he had his deputy onboard, literally, in front of railroad tracks, his vehicle parked on a track somewhere, hopefully not a busy track. We talked with him and they, and we also had, most importantly, the Trackmaster for Norfolk Southern and the Trackmaster for CSX. And they all agreed that they would completely rebuild all of these troubled intersection, railroad crossings, aggregate crossings in the spring. They, in the meantime, they suggested some signage to say that it's rough and to slow down and stay in your lane type of thing. So we'll ask the DOT, because they're DOT roads, to do that or at least approve it so we could do it. And there's an actual Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual as to what the signs have to say, how big they are. We can make those in-house. So I thought the meeting was very positive and we're moving ahead very well. Maybe Attorney Bob Seen would like to add to that.
I would just again thank Mr. Mays for all the side of work, helping to put this together and putting those petitions together. And also though, we really do have to thank Randy and his folks again and, and also Mr. Frangella and CSX and Norfolk Southern. I mean, I think that, you know, they're stepping forward and want, you know, they want to be good neighbors and it's really appreciated that everyone's working together for that, for that benefit of the city and its residents.
Well, that's awesome. Okay, Vince, yesterday, congratulations, by the way, that is great to hear, well deserved. But yesterday, at the Economic Development Committee meeting, we talked about a new sidewalk repair replacement project being rolled out, which will commence in the very near future. Now, this is apart from the sidewalk program the city currently has to offer the citizens. This new sidewalk project is going to concentrate on all of the sidewalks of our city, beginning with all of the hazardous and uncertain sidewalks. Funds will be coming from CDBG over the years for this project. Can you elaborate?
Sure, thank you very much. In the last annual action plan that was approved by council and submitted to HUD earlier in the summer, one of the program activities was a $95,000 activity to replace sidewalks that are in disrepair and are dangerous to our residents, our pedestrians walking through the city. We're going to be going systematically through the city. I believe we're going to be starting in Ward 1. It's going to be our DPW and our CDBG administrator and others that we're going to basically scout out and map out which one are the worst sidewalks and begin there. $95,000 sounds like a lot of money for sidewalks, but it doesn't go very far. So we're going to do the best we can and we know that this is always a very popular activity and good way for people in the neighborhoods to, to have good sidewalks that they feel confident and so they're not walking in the street and just keeping it safe as we can for our residents.
So it's, it's an ongoing project?
It should be an ongoing.
And eventually, it will even include, once we finish the repair of the hazardous ones, even include streets that don't have sidewalks too. So it'll be like a, almost a decade long?
Yeah.
Okay.
They will be prioritized by, by the worst of the worst and where there's the most foot traffic, make the most sense.
Okay, thank you very much. Mythel?
Thank you. Councilmember Mano.
Yes. Vince, congratulations. Randy, congratulations. On that note, can you explain to some of the residents, they have some concerns and questions really about the cutouts in the city roads, mainly in the Second Ward, but throughout the city too, what's happening with those cutouts and why they're doing them?
Sure. Couple of reasons for the cutouts, we've had some water main repairs on Route 5, we're still working on a couple of isolation valves on the project that will let us address waterline issues. Also, the National Fuel Gas is doing a lot of replacement of the old steel lines, so they've got a lot of cutouts as well. But we, everybody's working very rapidly. Biggest activity we have right now is the 700 block of Washington Avenue where we have a grant to replace lead service lines for the water lines. And we're blitzing that so that we can get that road paved under that grant. We don't have to dip into CHIPS money to get that road. That road will be completely new and with new service, get rid of an old four-inch junk line in that road. So we have lots of things dug up all over the place because we want to get done, hopefully by November 1st. The Blacktop Plant scheduled to be, stay open until right around Thanksgiving, but we want to do even faster than that.
Okay. You have the update on the lights, I see more lights out now than since the last council meeting.
The LEDs are primarily really good. We've got 1,500 of them up and they're working well. We have 117 and I'd like to credit City Master Electrician Dennis Odebravsky for going out in the last few evenings to count them and get the poll numbers. And Mayor and I will be meeting with the company to get those fixed and so it shouldn't take very long, it shouldn't be very hard to do and then we'll keep up with that. It's, it's routine maintenance, things are going to, you know. Lights in here will burn out from time to time, we just got to change bulbs, things like that.
All right, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
One more thing, I'd like to make a comment on the county fee. I am totally against the county fee. That's going to affect every taxpayer in the county. And my heart's right here in the City of Dunkirk, it's going to affect anybody here that lives in the City of Dunkirk, including us up here and people over here. Also, it's going to affect the industries, as I said in my debate and in the paper, today's paper, we want to bring in more work to the city. We want to maintain jobs and to have some of these factories expand, like the ice cream plant's going to be doing, where I work, we're doing that too. And this is just another bad thing that, bad decision the county's making on hurting the taxpayers and our business industries, like Councilman Stoyl said. They want to decrease the tax rate, but they want to increase the fee.
They're doing it on our backs.
Right. So I have a good idea why they want to do that, that's another conversation for another day, but I'm totally against this. I think, council, we should get together and write something up and say we're totally against it too. And I just think it's wrong and I, voice your opinion, people. Call your, call your legislator and tell them to vote the right way. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Stoyl.
Randy, personally, on personal note, the people on Washington Avenue want to thank you seriously, the ones with the lines that have been connected. The water flow is wonderful. Tried it, tried it 40 years ago, it took me 40 years, but patience is a virtue. Thank you very much. And along with Randy, Marty, anybody that's for this tipping fee raise, it's got to be out of their mind. So again, they're lowering their taxes, but like I just said, they're doing it on our backs. So voice your opinions. I for one, as this council, am totally against it.
Okay, shoot. Thank you. Councilwoman Nichols.
Yes. When the mayor said to stand behind him and give our disapproval, I think we should do it all as a team with the mayor and the council and send some kind of a letter to all the county execs and the legislators and everything else. So if we can get a letter compiled, and I'm sure all of us will sign it for the support of that. And the City of Jamestown has a lot more population than the City of Dunkirk, so I know what they would be using as far as picking up their street waste and that. Marty rained on my parade with the lights and I know it's getting darker earlier and it's, the sun is not coming up so, so early and a lot of the senior citizens are very concerned because it's very dark in their neighborhoods. And I'm sure that between Mr. Bob Seen, the mayor, and Mr. Woodbury and our master electrician in the city, they can compile a letter if our company that is supposed to be here doing the repairs is dragging their feet on it, that we could give them a little bit of a push. As when I talked to Mike this morning, there are 119 street lights that are out. Our city electrician did ward by ward, street by street to do a count every evening at dark time to get the count. On Street, Out of Street, Swan and Albany Avenue, I don't know if you've been that way, Marty, the paving on that, our guys did a superb job up there, Randy. But can you give a heads, heads up on, on the paving for the rest of the city before the plants are closed down?
Sure. The, the plant will stay open for a while, so we'll stay with any possible patching and other things the city crews have been doing. I'd like to remind people that, that our great American Federation State County Municipal Worker Local 912 works hand in hand while these projects are going on, along with the Management Division of the United Steelworkers 2693. And so we have good managers, good workers. We have to do a lot of ancillary work while these works are going on. So even though they were contracted out, the city engineer Andy Bone was right with them in both projects all the time. Rob Curry and his crew have been turning valves and making sure that's done right. So, you know, maybe someday we have a big enough crew that we could do more, but right now, the combination of working together with the unions and with the contractors to get these things done, I think is a really good benefit to the city for health and safety and I'm really proud of everybody working together on that.
Thank you. And just another reminder, please do not rake your leaves into the street. With the wet conditions, it plugs up our receivers. We have flooded streets, we can't be out there all the time. Natalie has to thank her crew down in the First Ward for getting her receivers. I have several in the Fourth Ward that do the same thing and I do it as well, so guys, if you want to yell at me, go ahead. I have a DPW meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 1:00 PM and, there was one more item, you threw me off there. I'm done for right now. Thanks Vince, keep the good work up.
That's it, last chance.
Okay. What I'd like to do is announce our budget workshop schedule. So those, these will all be at 5:00 PM and we are starting on Thursday, October 26th, Thursday, November 2nd, Tuesday, November 14th, and Thursday, November 16th. And that'll be in the mayor's conference room, correct, Mike?
Correct.
And I got one more for you, where'd it go?
Personnel.
Personnel. And we'll have a personnel meeting on Monday, the 23rd at 4:00 PM in the mayor's conference room also. Okay. All right, let's move on unfinished business.
Announcer.
Prefiled Resolutions Number 58.
Resolution authorizing amendment to extend Border Patrol augmentation for the.
Any discussion, council? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Lyskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Aye, carried. 59.
59, Resolution Authorizing Extension and Amendments to Discovery Reform Services Agreement.
Any discussion, council? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Lyskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number 60, Resolution Accepting Trees for Beautification.
Any discussion, council? Councilwoman?
Do we need to amend, do we have to amend?
I'd need a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lyskowiak, I have a second it by Councilwoman Nichols. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Lyskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Okay, aye, passed the amendment. Clerk, would you read the amended version of Resolution Number 60-2023?
Amended Resolution Number 60-2023, October 17, 2023, by Councilmembers Lyskowiak, Bemanto, Stoyl, and Nichols, Accepting Trees for Beautification. Whereas the City of Dunkirk's Revitalized Dunkirk Organizations wish to donate approximately 30 trees for planting in the areas between Point Rashit and Oak Street where there has been significant loss of ash tree, and whereas Revitalized Dunkirk and the Tree For The Organization are each acquiring and planting trees in the remaining months of 2023. And whereas these plantings will benefit the immediate vicinity and neighborhood, the city and its residents generally contribute to the overall environment, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Dunkirk Council hereby accept the generous donation of trees, the expertise of the Revitalized Dunkirk Volunteers, and the Chautauqua County Soil and Water Conservation Staff, and the Tree For The Organization, and be it further resolved the City of Dunkirk Council authorize the mayor to coordinate acceptance of this generous donation of plantings and volunteer time.
Thank you. Any discussion, council? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Lyskowiak?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Aye, carried. 61.
Number 61, Resolution Authorizing Paper Street Fail Moratorium.
Number 61. Resolution authorizing paper street fail moratorium.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, I would like Mr. Bob Seen to explain this in layman's terms, please.
I'm not sure I can do that.
Stop.
Councilmember Nichols, but I'll try. Yeah, so the council did adopt a resolution in 2018, and that resolution really established the beginning of the effort to take a look at paper streets throughout the city and where those paper streets really have no use for development or for utility services to provide access for residents or development, that those streets could possibly be transferred in terms of ownership to residents of the city. Preference was given at that time in that local law, and it's consistent with New York State law that preference for transfer of paper streets could go to adjoining property owners. So what's going on is that the process under that resolution and local law really has not been solidified, put forward in a manner that really allows for the efficient, effective transfer of any of these possible paper streets. So consequently, what we're looking to do, because it was opened up and a number of applications have come in, and we've encountered some problems with the process, we really want to make sure that we're providing the service that is necessary, that we have a process that is legally tight, a process that's efficient, and that when we make transfers or recommend transfers to the council, that you can be assured that these are paper streets that are not necessary for any purposes, or if there is any sort of protections that are needed, such as easements for utilities and so on, that all those kinds of things are addressed. And so this moratorium would be very helpful to allow us to make sure that we come back to the council and the mayor with, this is the process, these are the checklist, these are how we aim to proceed, you know, we need surveys, you know, we need the quitclaim deeds processed in such a fashion. Just want to make sure that everything's really tight, and so that would be the purpose.
This is not going to have any effect whatsoever on our discussions earlier with their further negotiations?
No. Actually, so in here, we've got two things that I think are critical. One is that we use October 6th as our real start date, so anything in process, you know, is not necessarily affected.
Right. If they come to an agreement, that thing will go forward.
Absolutely. That, and then also, though, there was a comment that was made that I think it's really important that we assure council members, but also the public. And that is that in the last resolved of this resolution, it states, resolved, nothing herein shall prevent the city of Dunkirk council from disposing of a paper street or portion of a paper street that the mayor deems to be in the best interests of the city during the period that this moratorium is in effect. And I think that really gets to the point that was made that, you know, look, if we've got development opportunities, we really want to take advantage of those. Again, I'm hopeful this moratorium's really not going to last that long. I mean, we put it until March 31, unless it's sooner.
Right.
And I think we can do it sooner.
Excuse me, Mike.
Yeah.
The whole thing that I think, the gist of this is, we also want to prepare our residents of what the costs are as they're going through, is the one part that we haven't also got.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. And so, in any event, that's the...
At the time, I just wanted to be clear on the private, the current situation.
I hope that was layman enough.
We have to catch up on what we have already there, to be finalized, what's already on there. This is just putting a temporary pause on the future purchases of it, just for a small timeframe that's right there.
Yeah.
After that timeframe, we'll see where we are. So we just basically need to do a catch-up.
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico.
Aye. Carried. 62?
62. Resolution establishing 2023 Halloween trick-or-treat hours as 4:00 to 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 31st, 2023.
4:00 to 6:00?
4:07.
4:07.
4:07.
I'm sorry?
Should be 4:07.
I made a full pause.
Okay.
4:07 PM on October 31st, 2023.
And we've been getting phone calls on that list. Any discussion, council?
No.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico.
Aye. Carried. 63?
63. Resolution providing a citywide rabies clinic.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico.
Aye. Carried. New business? We got a walk-on resolution?
We have walk-in resolution number 64-2023, October 17, 2023, approving settlement and seven tags of certiorary litigation, 30, Lake Shore Drive East, Dunkirk, New York.
Counsel, can I have a motion to bring the walk on the table? I got Stoyls and Nichols with a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico.
Aye. It's on the table. Any discussion, council?
Hearing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico.
Aye. Carried. Okay, second privilege of the floor is now open. Anyone like to speak?
Hi, would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Tamara Wisneski Benjamin. I live at 3677 Lakeford Drive East in Dunkirk. I just would like to present again the idea of having a discussion between council Revitalized Dunkirk and a Tree For The project, specifically Nancy Nichols, because she's head of DPW, and Mr. Bemanto, because the point is in his jurisdiction when it comes to council. So if I could just ask that council reaches out to us, or you want us to reach out, whatever you choose it to be, we need to have clarity, we need to have everybody on the same page, and we need to have it so that there's no questions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Marty?
I just, I would like to add something to that, and I don't know if Mr. Bob Seen will agree with this or not, but we need to do something, and I don't know if it needs to be in resolution form, to actually recognize a Tree For The as a program that the city is, like we had done with Revitalized Dunkirk so many years ago.
Oh, for like insurance?
Yes, because there's the liability with insurance and tax numbers and everything else like that that needs to be handled and net. And then I would, if we did have a meeting on that with the both parties involved, that we ask Mr. Woodbury and our division supervisor, Jason Sislovich, be present at the meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak publicly?
Mr. Bob Seen, yes. Mr. Bob Seen, of course. If the mayor wants to come, he can come too.
Nice try, Mike. You almost got out of it. Hello. State your name and address.
Sue Kuzlowski, 132 Fazel Avenue, Dunkirk. I would like to address to the council an issue regarding the illegal parking at the intermediate school during dismissal times. There's parking on both sides of the street, on Eagle between 5th and 6th, parking on both sides of the street between Eagle and Swan, and also between, on Swan, between 5th and 6th Street. Only one vehicle can get down the street at one time. If there's a second vehicle, they either have to back up or they have to pull into like a driveway, and I was wondering if this could be addressed?
I would like to refer you to public safety, Mr. Stoyl. I think your next meeting would be...
We've been through this, and Dave knows, when that school first opened up the new way, I was a crossing guard for three days.
I saw you.
You didn't get any hazardous pay, by the way, Dave.
They got to find it.
But at that point, I think they both may, but I agree, going south on Eagle Street one way and coming north on Swan Street, I think there was a flow of traffic. I don't, and then the chief and I met with the school officials, with Mr. Abbey, the parking lot with the buses, that was supposed to be extended. That was not.
And I never considered either side. They were supposed to extend both sides on Eagle and Swan and help alleviate some of that traffic issue.
So if we can, councilman and the Public Safety Committee, if we can take this up at maybe your next meeting, see if we can get Mrs. Kuzlowski some ideas and even reach out to the school if we have to.
It's organized chaos there.
Yeah. That's a nice way to put it.
The amount of students at that school location and that has caused an issue with traffic. We put our patrols in there, and we do the best we can, but for 15 or 20 minutes a day, it is what it is, and we'll work on seeing what we can do.
Yeah.
Also, if we could maybe address the possibility of putting a stop sign, a formal stop sign on these corners of 6th and Eagle, because there's probably stops on the other three corners of the school property. And they don't want, you know, the kids, they have to run across the street all the time, because they're... Also, if I could help in any way, or if you're Mrs. Dexter, you can really be helpful. And she would, you know, get...
We'll see what we can do and certainly get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the chief, we'll get together on our...
Would anyone else like to speak publicly? Going once?
Move you out.
Twice?
Thank you.
Three times? Second public portion is closed. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Stoyl, I got a second by Nichols. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.